Great, we'll call the meeting to order of July 28th. The planning board. I think we'll call Peter Morton.
Here.
Chris Almey.
Here.
Gordon Brewster.
Yes.
Susan Gilbert.
Here.
And Sarah Creighton's here and Marcus. Great. Welcome, everybody. The first thing on our agenda is the approval not required for Louisa McIntosh to divide a parcel at 30 Mill Street into two lots. Who do we have?
Evening, Madam Chair, planning board members. Mark McDan Ottenheimer, the owner of Mill River Consulting, an engineering company in Gloucester. And we have, it will hopefully be a confrontational matter for you this evening. Louisa McIntosh and her family have owned 30 Mill Street. It's a 10 and 1/2 acre parcel or so for many, many decades. Her son Luke is looking to build a house, so we are coming to you this evening for carving off a lot. So it's an A and R. The proposed lot is 30,000, more than 30,000 square feet. So it has the area, it has the frontage on two streets. And we've explained everything both in the table and in the application to you. This is completely conforming, no variances requested.
So the only thing I'd like to say is that it's a model presentation. I wish everyone did it as well.
Mark, do you have any recommendation?
I recommend that you approve the form.
Any questions from anybody?
Not worth it.
I would just want to put a couple comments on the record. I walked by the site today. The existing driveway, so the access which goes with the frontage is flat. There are no topography issues. There's plenty of room, almost 45 feet from the driveway to the nearest corner. So maybe it's evident to be approved.
Is that a motion?
Yes. So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve, endorse the approval of Sarah and Louisa McIntosh at 30 Mill Street in Manchester by the Sea, submitted July 14th. For 30 Mill Street, not 37th month one, too. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Close? Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you guys have your plans, why don't you press them to me and I can endorse them. Well, you can pick up at Mark's office. I'll do that after the meeting.
You can catch up all during the weekend?
Yeah.
Okay. Remember all the stuff?
Yeah, you might as well get some, then they have some.
It took longer to draw the yellow and the green on there. To make my presentation.
Right.
Wonderful. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Just call ahead.
Okay, sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Next, downtown. Kathy, welcome back.
Hi, thank you.
And we have John from the select board and, you know, Steve from Downtown Improvement. So Kathy's going to lead our discussion about what next.
So I thought this could be a kind of working discussion with the planning board and the Downtown Improvement Committee representatives, because I was tasked to help facilitate the downtown forum visioning workshop to develop, help articulate a vision as well as look at some short-term action steps and things that the planning board and the Downtown Improvement Committee and the town could do to improve and enhance downtown. And we also did a series of listing sessions. So I'm just going to pass this out. And I see it as a draft working document and I thought we'd kind of walk through it and go from there. And I really see this needing to be a discussion. But in, you know, the master plan, which you all worked on, or those who were active in the planning board in 2016, 2017, 18 with MABC articulated that the goal and vision for downtown was to be a dynamic downtown by 2027. And I think some of the feedback at the visioning workshops, we're not really there yet. That sounds like a nice idea. Some people, when we asked them what a dynamic downtown meant, they said, can it be dynamic? They're looking at it very much a future tense thing. So I think fine tuning the vision to be a little more detailed, but also lofty and future oriented in terms, people really, when we talked in all the listening groups and it came through the vision workshop, really value downtown Manchester as a really critical and important part. It's the heart of Manchester. It's walkable, it's social, it's your history. And I think all those things need to be drawn in. And people talk about mixed use. So I think articulating the vision as the vision for downtown Manchester is that dynamic, lively, walkable, mixed-use, commercial, civic, social, and cultural center with the harbor, the train, the historic district, serving people of all ages who live and work in the Manchester area. So I think there was a pretty strong message from the visioning workshop that people were comfortable with not just serving Manchester residents, but the larger area. People recognize that there are visitors to the area. You have, your master plan says you have over 4,000 visitors at Singing Beach. So embracing that, maybe you clearly don't want to be, quote, "a tourist destination" with the honky-tonk, but recognizing that's part of your market. And I think this vision statement may go towards that direction. But I think there's also a secondary part, which is the next paragraph on the first page, is that to realize these aspirations for downtown, we, the Manchester community, will need to add a little spice, borrow some words from the workshop, the downtown, welcome new users and patrons, work together, business, property owners and residents on change, improvements, and resiliency. I think it's really important to recognize that having a stronger downtown is not just a business owner's issue, it's not just a town issue or a governmental, it's all, everyone working together. And I think that's important to articulate, because too often you get into, well, why isn't the town doing it? Or why isn't the businesses doing it? But we all have to work on it. So I wanted to try and embrace this. So that's a draft. So any thoughts, reactions, is something missing?
So when you say mixed-use, commercial, then mixed as residential was commercial? Or should we add residential as a specific thing?
I think when, I think that's upward kind of discussion, because mixed-use commercial would imply that there is less commercial as an aspect of the project, whereas mixed-use residential, you could have nonprofit uses, government uses, and housing, which maybe you want, but I wasn't sure. I know, you know, I know people sounded like they really wanted to maintain retail and commercial on the ground level, but we're comfortable with including housing as part of the mix. And you certainly, with MBTA zoning, you know, adapted regulations that bring housing into downtown in a much more concentrated perspective. So having active first floors that would include commercial. So I think that's a nuance, and I think it could go either way, frankly.
To Chris's point, though, shouldn't it have residential measured going somewhere around here?
Well, I wasn't trying, you could. That's where I think mixed use fits in. I don't think you're trying to be a residential center, per se. You're wanting to maintain the commercial focus, so that's why I didn't highlight residential. I figured it was encompassed in mixed use. But I think when we did the exercise, where is downtown Manchester? With the planning board, and then we did it at the workshop. I think people were kind of one of a couple perspectives. Some people drew it very tightly, and it was just the business district. And other people drew it, so included Mascanum Park. It went up to Norwood and where the parking area is by the cemetery. It included, you know, obviously, everyone included Town Hall. But the broader definition seemed that people are thinking downtown as a neighborhood as compared to just strictly a commercial business district. So I think there's two perspectives, and I think one of the knobs on one of the visioning work, small groups, said, well, we really have three areas in downtown, and I would concur with that. You have kind of the business area, you have kind of the civic institutional area, I would use the word institutional, and you have areas that are more residential and open space or harbor. So I think you have, you have a compact downtown, but for a community your size, it's pretty big in terms of how it stretches. So you kind, you kind of have sub-areas within the downtown, and you could define that as a neighborhood. So I think it's how you want to look at it. I would probably look at, embrace it with your current definition of downtown, recognizing that the commercial core is really centered around Crossby's, but you certainly have businesses along, you know, beach streets are major business on the street, and, you know, certainly you've got folks on, you know, businesses on Central and Washington that are important. It's, um...
One of the takeaways I had from the forum was that I did not hear a single person say they wanted it to be all residential.
Right.
It was presumed that it would have, most, all the discussion was about commercial and active community uses. So I didn't hear anybody say, let's get rid of those. Let's, you know, I think it was almost, it was assumed.
I think, I think you're right. And I think, so I think residential is kind of the newer use, so to speak. What's new is what's now all of this new again, so to speak, in terms of having mixed use. So if you want to call it out, we certainly can add that.
Right, but I also think it was at the street level that everybody was talking about, rather than a four, a three-story commercial enterprise.
Right. I think people were comfortable with current scale.
Yes.
Which includes single-story and two-story and two-and-a-half story.
I have a question for you about commercial and what commercial means. And I came away from the session with the notion that people were thinking about it more as restaurants and shops versus office. And I'm curious about whether that impression is what you, when you looked at people's remarks.
I have a couple reactions to that. One, I think in the vision statement, you want to keep it broad and flexible. In terms of specific about what people were perceiving as commercial, I think you're right, when people are talking about active commercial uses, they're generally talking about retail and restaurants. But increasingly, you have service businesses or cultural uses. People also talk about entertainment and cultural. So I think I did insert the term social and cultural, because people call for gathering space, people call for arts and music, some people want dancing, but that option, and you have cultural institutions already with the library and the museum, but I think people are also looking at, maybe, maybe there's a place to go here, a quintet, or, you know, or a band. And, you know, that perhaps could be accommodated with existing uses, but it's not been really called out as part of what you've been talking about in terms of downtown. So that's why I inserted social and cultural in the draft. So I think you're right that people were thinking that active restaurant, retail piece. And, you know, the other thing about offices, offices often, you know, real estate is kind of an office, insurance is kind of an office, you know, so there are some, you know, doctor's offices are offices or medical offices, you know, accountants and professional services that you could find in downtown. Might be appropriate, but might not be ideal for the ground level. You know, they might be good at, you know, the side of a building, you know, at, not the street frontage, but maybe the, but on the first floor farther back, might be okay for a second floor. But you're, you know, the vision is kind of a big global meta-piece, whereas when we're talking about uses, you may want to fine-tune your use case. So, you know, I thought we'd first talk about the vision statement and the paragraph, and, you know, you certainly might want to, you know, chew on it a little bit and think about it overnight, and talk amongst yourselves more informally, but I think the comments and clarifications about mixed use, that's a good point. Any other kind of, did I hit the right tone? Is something missing?
It's the right tone.
So the only thing that I think is missing, you have people of all ages who live and work in the Manchester area. In the summer, we have people who visit, and most of them just visit for the day. They don't see them and the people who are served. And so that's just something to talk about.
I think people have different definitions of the Manchester area. I did not get the impression, though you may want to, that people want to do tourism marketing. But I think people are, you already have visitors that are coming a distance. The definition of a tourist in, you know, the hospitality tourism industry and planning circles is someone who travels at least 50 miles, and it's at least a day trip or stays overnight.
But what about people who are just visiting for the day?
You know, that could, you know, I think that's probably, you know, some people would say Boston is part of the Manchester area, so.
Okay.
I think it would, I don't think it would be bad to put who live, work, and visit the Manchester area. Add in the word visit.
That's fine, that's a good suggestion.
That would be my, yeah.
Does this needs to be your vision statement, not the Kathy Kaye's vision statement? Needs to be downtown Manchester, in the Manchester community. So let's, let's go to page two, if we're kind of okay with, and if you have thoughts later on about the vision statement.
We didn't email this to me, did we?
I will email, no.
I was going to share it.
I haven't emailed it out.
Oh, I was going to share it.
This is all draft, so.
I might be able to take a picture and share it. Hold on.
Yeah, for people that are on Zoom, is there anything to look at? Slides, anything?
No, we're, I'm seeing if I can take a picture of it.
That's very kind.
So one, and I apologize, I focused more on the work plan than doing slides. The next page really identifies the recommendations based on the visioning and workshop and discussion on short, principally short-term action plans. So to the left, if it's S P, that's short-term. I view short-term as anywhere from immediate to the next 18 to 24 months. So you've got to, you know, move fairly quickly. Midterm would probably be 18 months to three or four years. So some people think of that as short-term, but I kind of differentiate the two. So I grouped them into five major categories. One was promotion and marketing, land use and zoning, parking came up several times, business recruitment and development, and placemaking and physical improvement. Which kind of goes somewhat to thinking about what I mentioned about the Main Street approach of looking at organization, design, promotion, and marketing, as well as economic vitality. So I tried to hit all those issues. And the following pages that are in tiny print, and I will send the larger print, the 11 by 17 version, to you by email, really details each of these, with some of the rationale, some initial steps, what's a metric or a key performance indicator might be, some successful examples. I left blank the lead entity, except if it was clear that was a planning board item like zoning, and did a very broad cost information piece. But I think a key issue is really to determine who is the lead entity, because on some of these things, like promotion and marketing, who's taking the lead? And many people, whether during the listing session or at the forum, talked about the need for communication, getting the story that there are businesses and open for business and come and visit, come and visit and shop, that whole need of promotion and marketing. Whose, whose portfolio is that? Is it the merchants? Is it as a group? Is it, you know, what's the role of the town, the planning board, the Downtown Improvement Committee? You know, you don't have a downtown association that I'm aware of. And so at this point, someone needs to kind of take the lead. And I think that's a really important thing, that the Downtown Improvement Committee and Planning Board, you have to put your heads together on each of these, like, is there a point person? And you can't put it all on Mark, because he's got enough work. You might want to give him some of these things, but it's too easy to say, oh, that's staff, well, let's figure out who it is, you know, and who's going to review it. Because I think with any work plan, you're going to need to look at this once a month or at least once a quarter and say, are we making progress?
Just on that point, subject to further guidance from our elected leaders, we've been sitting down with Chamber and working on the concept of the Business Development District, which is a, and in larger towns, is a, is a tax base.
Right, it's a business improvement district.
Yeah, so, but we're, at this point, we're just imagining us as a volunteer business improvement district and, and working towards specifically finding, matching commercial properties with attractive businesses that we think would be welcome in town. We're in the very early stages.
That's good.
Well, we're trying to help.
I agree, I'd hear that.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I, but I think part of that, and I would say, one, there are four things identified as part of promotion and marketing, and some of these are basic. One is creating an annual promotion calendar. What, yeah, and what was interesting is many of the small groups at the visioning workshop talked about how you've got the summer festival on the Fourth of July, and then you've got, you know, Halloween, and people really like Santa coming in on the boat and the tree lighting. So in terms of special events and people coming to downtown, you're capitalizing on the summer with Singing Beach and, you know, the Fourth of July, and your festival that's next weekend, and you've got Halloween covered, and you've got Christmas covered. So you've got stuff from, you know, late June to December. The first six months of the year, there's more real promotion going on from a business district perspective. You know, it's hard to say how businesses, like, it's too bad that you guys survive on two or three months of high income when we're not doing any marketing January through June. So thinking through a promotions calendar and adding another event, whether that's a winter event, whether that's something about Valentine's Day, something about getting ready for spring, you know, there's one community, Chatham does an Easter egg roll, but then you get, you visit businesses to identify where the four golden eggs are hidden. But that gets people in the door. And once people get in the door, they sometimes buy, or at least they become more aware. So that's an example of a special event with a retail tie-in. So you need something like that during the first six months. And doing a promotion calendar kind of like, doesn't mean this committee has to do it, but there's got to be, whether it's the businesses or some group or businesses in partnership with residents, you need beyond the Chamber, you need some promotion in between winter and spring. It could be something that involves the library and the museum, you know. I know one community does literary lectures in February, and they invite authors to come, and they do tie-ins where authors, you know, they have major events like at the library and other places in their downtown, and, you know, authors also visit businesses. You have a bookstore, you know, you have a library, you have a museum, you've got meeting spaces, that might be a way to do a non-traditional. Maybe, maybe it's music. There's lots of different ways to do it. But you've got to find what's best, and where the creative uses are in Manchester. But that's why I think a promotion calendar and a winter, early, spring event with retail ties is really important, because we can talk about changing zoning and doing all this, but we got offerment cash registers ready, because that's, you know, and that helps recruit businesses, because we have existing businesses, when they prosper, they're your best salespeople for recruitment.
I got a question. So you mentioned the calendar, and you say nothing's going on January to June.
And I may be missing something, so.
I beg to differ. I think the problem is, is you can't go to one place and say, this is what's going on. The library has a program.
Right.
Lots of different programs. The museum has lots of different programs. The cultural, you know, council would have various things. There are things that go on that are not weather-dependent, per se, like the summer. It's just that.
So maybe we need to.
Yeah, you need to consolidate that so people can say, I'm coming in here for the day, what's going on? And there are things that are going on, but you got to look by different places.
You're true, we have, there was a skating rink on Mascanum.
That's an excellent thing. Past two years, I'm a big fan of skating, I don't know why it didn't get out the last two years. It should, it should be an annual, like every March, layout of skating. We have an artificial skating rink, we put in, put in Mascanum.
I've heard rumors about this. I haven't seen it.
It works.
But, but your point leads to one of the other things. Have a master calendar, and that's in, if you had a downtown website and everything on it, and you can automate that. on it, and you can automate that so that someone doesn't have to add it, if someone wants to add it, they add the information and it populates your calendar. So, and I suspected people didn't go to, you know, go to sleep in January, February, and March, that there was probably stuff going on, but we have to kind of like, come to downtown, there's a lot going on, because people who aren't connected and hooked in may not be aware, as you say, you've got to look by different places. So, having that, having a downtown website, that could be a webpage to start off with as part of the town, if the town's agreeable, maybe it's getting the Chamber to add a webpage that's for downtown, or setting up your own webpage, which what, if you had a downtown improvement, you know, association, you probably would be doing. But then doing that calendar, so that's a community service, and also reinforces what's going on. And also, businesses then can say, well, I'm doing an event, or, because one of the things with experiential marketing, you want businesses, whether it's a tasting at one of the liquor stores, or they're having, you know, the hardware store saying, okay, this is what you need to do to kind of get ready for cold weather, in terms of weatherization or other tips, you know, that are related to home improvement or other such things, or getting ready for a spring gardens. Those are types of things that can all be added to a website, but you don't have to do all the programming.
Yep.
You have partners who do all the programming, but capturing that information, so it's part of what downtown is in terms of more people. And if someone is doing a big event, it's like, oh, you have Valentine's Day, then maybe encourage, you know, it's Valentine's all week, you know, that, you know, so-and-so's doing this thing, you might have, you know, you could have a, you know, winter stroll, just like people have Christmas strolls, so people can get in and get out around downtown.
I think we can all think of ways, you know, the Rotunda exhibit that just happened, the art exhibit, it was fabulous, but none of the stores were open. And here we were walking around to the store windows to look in their window at the art that was in there. You know, it was kind of just done by the council and art, by the art council, whatever it was, which was great, but to your point, if we had someone who was.
That would be a fabulous event, you know, because it draws people, you have a lot good window display in most of the businesses, but also then, you know, helping tell the story and doing, well, we're going, you know, maybe everyone stays open another hour and a half that one evening, kicking off art windows week off.
I have a question.
Gar, over in the corner.
Oh, other towns are, my name's Gar, other towns are, like Chatham, are very successful with this, obviously figured it out. What is the mode that they use to pull together this information, you know, have the promotion, annual promotion calendar? Let's copy somebody who seems to know what they're doing. So, what are the, what are the modes that we might consider?
Well, I, I'm not sure what, let me try and answer the question and then come back if I don't really hit it completely. So, in terms of, I think it's helpful to look at the National Main Street Centers kind of Main Street framework that many communities have worked with or done takeoffs on. And the National Main Street Center has been working to revitalize town centers in small downtowns for the last fifty years. So, that's a pretty tried and true. And that's where they look at promotion and marketing, design, which could be, you know, physical improvements, facade, signage, information, kind of the physical built environment as well as open space, organizations, sometimes that's policy, making sure you have a public-private partnership, partnering with your Chamber, partnering, getting businesses involved, getting residents involved, getting town government involved, maybe regional entities. But, you know, just like the downtown improvement committee is talking to the Chamber, maybe we can develop a business improvement district on a volunteer basis, that's kind of something that falls under organization. Then also economic vitality. It's important to understand the market considerations, which I cover a bit at the downtown forum, but then also what are your goals? You know, clearly, filling vacancies is an important goal right now in Manchester. So, some of that is, you know, whether that's a site finder, so if people are interested, they can find a list of, you know, a list of vacant spaces, maybe it's getting technical assistance and helping grow businesses, maybe it's pop-ups, having a recruitment package, or a combination thereof. Many communities do one, two, or three things. It's important to kind of look at design, organization, promotion, economic restructuring, all do a little bit continuously. So, that's kind of the general framework.
I'm curious, sorry to interrupt, but I was just really saying, other towns seem to be able to have a program that works. How, which town should we copy?
Well, I think you've got to chart your own way, but I'll take Chatham for example.
Okay.
We mentioned it, Chatham has a Chamber of Commerce, they also have, it's the Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Merchants Association. They've also had a staff position where they've had someone focused on downtown, on town government, it's been in their planning department, but they, you know, it's, in terms of similar-sized community as Manchester, I know they had someone full-time for a while who, a major part of her portfolio was looking at downtown. So, there was staff time and resources put into that. So, that's one example. I think in terms of like the downtown business improvement districts, people have used that as a way to kind of provide a cash flow that helps supplement existing services from the town or municipality. Certainly during COVID, those communities that had a business, formal business improvement district, were able to pivot more quickly and provide direct assistance to their business, local businesses. Those who were more voluntary were slower to react.
Volunteer may be a problem, because, you know, if the volunteer groups change every two years, it's hard to, the continuity.
Consistency and stability.
Yeah, yeah.
And it goes back to consistency and stability. So, one of the issues is all finding, with everything, finding revenue. So, business improvement districts are one way to generate revenue, either voluntary or when it's formalized. Some communities have done parking benefit districts, if they call it parking revenue. The town, the state has enabling legislation that you can create a parking benefit district, and then direct that for improvements within the given district, and not just to the general one. But that means you have to have parking fees. So, yeah.
So, I just had a thought, Jody Morse of London, Jersey League. So, I had a thought about the whole idea of marketing and promotion, just going through that. I think one of the things we do have here in Manchester, we have an active newspaper, which a lot of towns don't have. And Erica Brown does these inserts where she obviously gets advertising, a revenue generator for her, which is great, but we should have a tie-in, so she did one in the spring, and it was all about, you know, planting and gardening and spring cleaning and all this kind of stuff. I don't think there was really any tie-in, they all paid to put ads in the paper, but maybe putting an event around that. So, you, you know, utilizing and leveraging the efforts that our newspaper does would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I, I think you make an excellent point, and I'm not saying there aren't resources in Manchester, or both governmental and volunteers and people and private sector entities, but it's kind of like doing that gardening, well, where can, you know, you can get bases for gardens at a variety of stores, you can also get, you know, gardening gloves, whether it's at the hardware store or some of the other stores, there's books about gardening, kind of like, you know, that could be a garden, spring gardening kickoff, you know.
That's what I'm saying, she's already doing a promotion, we don't have an event. So, that could be a good way of putting those.
Yeah, so facilitating that tie-in is a great idea.
It's about people seeing and, and, you know, seeing that they should, I mean, it's up to, if I'm holding an event, it's up to me to put it in the cricket. And, and that's one of the challenges.
Well, and that's why you need to have a, does the committee, a group, whatever.
So, yeah, I want to go back to that, who's going to take the ball and run with it here? And it seems to me there are two possibilities, one short-term and one longer. We've had a pretty good experience with a task force that redid the zoning for the MBTA. Maybe a task force can get this thing going, but I think the better answer is to reimagine the DIP program, because they're already, they're already doing some of this, they seem to be concentrating so far in physical improvements, but maybe, now it looks like, Steve, you're sort of broadening your, your view.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think maybe if that were expanded and formalized in some way, and one of the things about the DIP that is very disappointing is no merchants, I don't think on it.
No, Jim Brown.
That's, that's, that's been a struggle we've been working on. Merchants are busy, we're lucky to get the Chamber.
Well, I think that's a, that's a real lack of something that we need to fix.
Yeah, the Select Board has invited us to redraw our charter, which is underway this month.
Well, I think you should make it as broad and powerful as you can.
Thank you for your confidence.
I think he just assigned it all to you.
I just got to sign the whole, I'm here, I'm here.
Merchant involvement is not an unusual problem, it's not unique to Manchester. You know, you've got over two thousand households in Manchester, but you only have forty-seven businesses in downtown. So, if you, you know, percentage-wise, you probably, you have more people, you know, you know, residents tend to participate more than businesses, small businesses, you know, they do their billing and ordering and payment late at night, so they're stretched out. So, having some, getting some involvement, maybe it's a property owner, you know, sometimes it's, you know, a son or daughter or parent of the active business manager who's familiar with the business can help out. It's not, it's not easy.
So, I'm going to just pause for one second, because Tony Borletti snuck in, he's our new town administrator, so I want to introduce him, if people haven't met him. Welcome to the planning board, thank you for coming. We also have two comments from people who have been very active on this issue on our audience. So, Jim Brown, you want to unmute and?
Thank you very much, Tony, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Brown, Forty-Three Pond Street, Essex Pass, but also Eleven B Street, Manchester. I was an active member of the DIP and also tried to attend those meetings, both as representative of the local businesses and the Chamber of Commerce. And we also have another member of the Chamber, Colleen, who attends as many of those as she can, I don't think she's missed one in a little while. And I think it's really important, it is challenging to get the actual business owners, but I have a strong connection with all of them, and, you know, as I'm working with Ski, I relay that information. The second point I want to make is, I'm not sure who was talking at the time, but I do think this is an excellent opportunity for the, for the DIP to reposition itself, to kind of add some of the, some of the stuff we talked about in terms of promoting and mapping and those sort of things. So, I think the DIP is a great, great, great resource for that.
Great, thanks, Jim. Marlene, you have your hand up?
I did, thank you so much. Marlene Dolan, Nineteen Woodcrest Road, Manchester, on the DIP, happily. Two comments, first, thank you so much for putting this together there. It's a very, it's a very good plan with a good order of operations and brings out a couple of big points that I think a lot of us have been thinking about. There is something, just as a person, I don't know if it's two or three years, Steve, that I've been on the committee, but during that time, I've led two different efforts, one on parking and one on signage, and I came away from both of those, both of those with the following feedback to myself and to the town, which I've shared, but also an idea. And so, the parking study was extensive, we also got involvement from the Mass State Government, and it was, you know, surveys and it was door-to-door and blah, blah. We found out a lot about parking, and essentially what we found out was, weekends and in summer, the parking is a problem for some. Two, most people define parking problem as not being able to park in front of their business. Three, there are spots, there's ample room, according to the way the survey ran, for people to park around town for the most part. And I, I don't know how many of you drive around and try to find parking, the only thing I have a problem with is finding parking when I go to Laugh and Go, other than that, not a problem, but I'm just being lazy. So, that's, that's one on the parking, but nobody seems to remember that or know that. So, where would that lie? That's number one. Two, you talk about a parking map, I put together an entire parking website, I did it with Tiffany, it was marvelous, I don't know if anybody is keeping it updated, that, you know, and there are things that have changed, the scalps is now, not, the scalps is now twenty-five, not thirty dollars, it would be great there to get that. So, things kind of like, as I said, we come up with a committee idea, we work it to the bone, we put the implementation in, and then over time, it wears itself out because other things are going on. The final point I'll make is with the signage, that did take a long time, it's over, there are a limited number of signs in, it turns out that the typing is too small, unfortunately, it will need to be improved. However, some of the signs are being blocked, I'm not sure where, how they got put, where they were, and ultimately, what I came to the conclusion of is, the DPW, which is part and parcel of all that, is so overwhelmed with other work that they don't have the bandwidth to put this together. And being a project manager and running a consulting firm for many years, somebody on the inside needs to manage capacity, and that is all the capacity coming in from all these committees, who is not only a capacity manager, but also an integrator of all these different committees and social institutions. That job, I think, should be put in place prior to us just loading up all these poor departments with more to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlene.
Marlene has been one of our great contributors, so, you know, we're a genetic gratitude.
And I just looked up the Where to Park in Manchester, which is easy to find on the website.
What did you, I just searched.
It may be not, it may not be where people would go to look for it, but to Marlene's point. Couple other comments, Kathy Bellata, Select Board.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, no, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Marlene said, the parking studies as an example, there were two of them that were brought together, it was at least a couple of years ago, if not three years ago, and we just saw the implementation of one of their near-term ideas, which was to paint lines along Central Street, and you may have seen that come up, I think it was last week. So, I agree with Marlene that it's taking too long to implement agreed-upon solutions after. after the teams or committees, you know, come up with a solution, bring it to the planning board, bring it to the Select Board, we're all in agreement, and it just takes too long to implement. So I just wanted to support Marlene in that commentary because we're asking people to volunteer their time. And then when it takes years to see their solutions come to fruition, it's very disheartening and it makes it difficult for us to continue to get people to participate. Thank you.
For those that don't know, I just mentioned that Kathy is our liaison with the Select Board and has greatly facilitated our work since that system was set up.
Great. Jim, another comment, then I want to make sure we get to the.
The Chamber recently bought or paid for an app called MapMe. I mean, just completed it. And I don't know if you're interested in me showing my screen for a second, I've got it up, but it, it allows you to open up with a QR code. Our plans are to have posters at all of the businesses and maybe something down at the train station when boats get on. You can select public bathrooms, and it highlights bathrooms on the map. You can select parking, it highlights the parking areas on the map. It's really quite cool. And we're ready to launch this.
So, so you're co-host, you should be able to share it briefly.
So Jim, this is Peter Morton. How you doing?
Yeah.
So that sounds to me like on that app, you could easily add events to it.
So I'm not sure on that. That's an excellent question, but if you look at this right now, you can see if I click on parking, it highlights the parking areas. And all I have to do is click on that, and it gives you a brief description of there's a website. I also put down the street parking in the center of town. And the path, I showed the path. If you look at Central Street, talks about two hours of parking available. So we have that. If you, if you click public restrooms, it shows your tax point, Bravo by the Sea and Duck and Donuts, and then the Town Hall. And if you unclick, it has all.
Jim, this is terrific, terrific work. Love it.
Transportation, so the.
So Jim, is the Chamber responsible for this?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah, so the Chamber started it. We bought the app and then our IT person put basically what she could off of map, off of Google Maps. And then I went in for a few hours on it over the last week and pretty much put this together.
Great. Nice.
I think that illustrates the importance of partnership, so I want, thank you for showing that. And I think it also, what Kathy was saying really leads to thinking about who's the designated person. Many people volunteer in town on policy and thinking through the policy and improvement issue, but then you got to actualize it. And I think that's where, who's, who's the implementation team? Who's the implementation point person? It can be, you know, staff can play an important role, but we can't keep adding job, everything to the town managers' plate and the planning directors' plate. Not to say that they shouldn't participate, but we got, that's kind of, that's one of your weak links. Because you, you're incredibly bright, you've got, you've developed some great policies, you've looked at the parking study, which one of the things I said, let's take out that parking study and figure out, implement a recommendation, pick one, do it. And that's where kind of the Achilles' heel is. So thinking through how we got implemented, who's reviewing implementing. That's why I did a one-page or so, because it's, what's the status? You know? And you can just take it out planning board meeting, okay? Someone doing this? Have we heard from them? We got to hold each other accountable.
So can we jump to the land use and zoning?
Absolutely.
If you want to sit and, you're welcome to.
Oh, thank you, but this way I can see.
Yes, okay. But I want to make sure that we know whether we can, how short term.
It's bread and butter, so to speak, of the planning board. I identified a couple of short-term, as well as what I think might be a little, what I would call midterm. One was, people keep calling for mixed use. Your zoning list of uses don't allow mixed use. You need to change your zoning, you know, your use table. You might want to, you know, I know there's been a suggestion to maybe think about it as an overlay or a use table just for the downtown area within the general district, because you might not be ready for, for the whole general district. That might not be a good thing, because people haven't looked at it for that. From downtown, people have been talking about mixed use, so time to do it. And that would help facilitate development. The other issue is requiring an active first-floor use, which, you know, we talked about a little earlier, there's, there are some different strategies. One of the things, on several recent initiatives, I've noticed that the commercial real estate organization, NAOP, as well as some of the other real estate organizations in greater Boston, have come out against requiring commercial on the ground floor. And the reason is that it's very difficult to pencil out commercial uses on the ground floor, particularly in neighborhood business districts, as in some places, there's too much retail. So that what's happening is that there's mixed-use buildings with vacant ground floors. So it just makes everything look more vacant, so we're not necessarily solving the problem. And part of that is because people make entire corridors mixed-use, whereas it should be concentrated, like you're trying to concentrate in your downtown area. So I just bring it up so you think it through. One solution might be requiring the first 30 or 40 foot of depth of a building as active use, retail, restaurant. It could be more, but it could also allow for a different use in the back half. It could also allow for a podium-style building that has it. Does everyone know what a podium-style building is?
No, and could you also detail what is and is not an active?
Okay, good questions. So an active use in cap, is typically perceived as retail or restaurants or some kind of use where people are coming in on a regular basis. And, you know, so there could be some nonprofit art uses, like galleries or community center type uses that are active, because people are coming in and out every day. But what you want is also transparent windows, so it's not like a wall. So when some businesses, you know, either put blinds or signage that basically make it, you know, you can't see inside, that's kind of, that creates a virtual, you know, a visual wall, so it's less interesting, there's less transparency. So I think that contributes to an inactive use. So typically restaurants, retail, but you also have some civic, social nonprofit issues that fall into that as well. Generally, offices are not typically viewed as active uses. I know childcare was mentioned as a desired need in the downtown with one of the groups. That's probably not a use that you put in the core area, but you might put in and around downtown because it's a good use near the train station. People can drop off and pick up their kids if they're working and, and taking the train. In some ways, having kids and a lot of, a lot of people coming and going in early in the morning and late in the afternoon could be construed as an active use. But you, in an ideal world, you would put that at your 100% corner. You would put it within, but not, not in the, not in the core, the central point area. So I think I tried to answer that. Podium-style buildings is basically a commercial built, it could be commercial or residential. It's kind of, in essence, built on stilts, for lack of a better term, so that you often find parking underneath and so that, but you can have parking underneath in the rear, but you could have active first-floor uses being the frontage. So on small lots, where you have parking requirements, people often will go up, put the parking on the surface level, because it's the most economical way to buy parking, build a frame, so it's kind of like a building on stilts to park underneath, and a commercial or residential use is raised.
Good question up here. I just have a comment about the word require. I have three apartment buildings, one in Quincy, 300 units, one in Cambridge, 310 units, one in Boston, 130 units, required by the municipality to put retail in the first floor. It has been torture. There is no, there is no rent low enough to get these retail. Now, we've gotten, then we've subsidized, we've given money to people who wanted to do all sorts of shops, and knock on wood, they're all, they're all leased. I encourage the planning board to not use the word require. I, I love the word allow instead of require. If you require IKEA, that's absurd, but if you require a furniture store in the first floor of, of a given block, you're, you're basically not good for the, for the folks that own the building, okay?
Well, you're illustrating the problem I was referencing.
It's a tough one, but to require retail is, is a misnomer. You're kidding yourself. Allow retail? Wait, allow retail? And if the market has a need, that's the way the free enterprise system works, you know? And I'm a, I'm a communist myself, but that's okay. I still believe in free enterprise. So I, I, I really think that requiring uses should be not done. Allow use is a great way.
Well, I, I, I know your pain, because I've, I've seen, I've seen it in many examples. I, I think you've got to look at how large the area is. And all three of your examples, there is a lot of, all three communities are over retail in a lot of ways. So, and what happens is that people wonder why rents are higher. You, you know, you know you're going to have vacant space, so you have to make it up because you know, rents go up.
Residential rents are good. So it's not like we're, we're penalizing retailers to subsidize empty space. We're just trying to get people to open a business, that's all.
So I understand the argument about the requiring of an active use or even a commercial use, active or inactive, you know, office. On the flip side, I think what we're hearing from the community is that they want that vibrancy, that, and that, what I'm hearing from the market is that if you don't require it, in this market, we may get all, we may get conversions to residential, you know, up and down the street, and then it's gone. And so the dilemma here is.
Well, that's why I mentioned only doing maybe 30 or 40.
Right, right. And then the other thing is what can we?
Both issues, and I want, I wanted you to be aware of that challenge. And I didn't realize you were going to have a voice here expressing the pain.
But it seems to me that the, that once it's gone, it's gone. And, and if we, if we particularly focus on those areas or that area where there's already active uses on the first floor.
Well, that's also one of the reasons to keep the area in Manchester where retail can be located very compact, so that those who are developing within that area have a reasonable opportunity to get an active use. And it's why you may not require, you may not want to require the entire floor plate. I understand why you want to allow. I mean, but I, I think there's a balancing act that you got to be, I bring up the issue from the real estate community, just so you're aware of it, you know, and not blindsided, but it is, if you don't require it, you don't get it.
That's a question. So is there data available? And Jim, I don't know whether, whether the Chamber has this about commercial vacancy rate in Manchester? It'd be interesting to know.
Well, I know when I looked at your rapid recovery plan from 2021, so we were in the midst of the pandemic, that you had two commercial vacancies. And you have more than that today. So it's gone upward, that's not surprising, since I think there were people who kind of survived the pandemic and then exhaled and said, I'm either selling or closing. And we have, but I think you also have some generational transition, transitions where people are, you know, that store owners are getting retirement age, and you got to think about who's the next generation that's going to take it on.
Yep. Jim, you had some, some feedback on probably the require and the allow and the rates.
I'd like to just, that's all what Gar said. If you, if you mandate retail on the first level front, you're going to have empty spaces. And I can tell you, I work really, really hard at having a good mix of businesses, and it is, it's not easy at all.
And you do a great job, Jim. You do a great job.
It's not easy, and we're fortunate to have some larger businesses, like the banks and the supermarkets, that help us, how to subsidize the retail. So, you know, so businesses like Mob, it's 50-plus business, we just got Style Soup in the, in downtown area. They struggle. They had a long year last year. It's, it's really brutal, and it's, it's challenging for us to collect rents from, from businesses like that and collect decent rents, you know? We don't, I don't want them going out of business, it's kind of a partnership, but we don't make a lot of money off of those businesses. And I think if you mandate that, that would be a big mistake. I think a better approach is to work with the property owners and, and maybe incentivize us or help us do that. Regulations, we're always seeing new regulations, particularly in Massachusetts. I just got hit with this small energy building, large energy, lab building, energy reporting regulation now, that's part of the windmill thing. There's a lot of stuff we do behind the scenes that are just regulation-driven. There's a lot of costs, fire systems we're inspecting all the time, repairing, and it's unbelievable. And I think you're better bet is just to work with the business owners, like I saw in, in the property owners, and say, okay, let's do our best to keep a variety of businesses. And I've had an empty space behind Kate Van Sevens Bank right now for four or five months. I'm working with a chiropractor right now. I think that would be a great business back there. We did have the yoga studio, which is one of my favorite businesses. We lost that during COVID, and I've been unable to get something like that. We had the massage therapist was up, up above, behind the bank, and that, she was actually, she did a lot, a lot of business there. And it's really hard now to get, to get a mix of businesses like that. If you mandate it, though, you're just going to see empty spaces. It's too hard.
I want to push back a little bit, because, in fact, what fuels retail spaces
I want to push back a little bit because in fact, what fuels retail spaces are residences. And if there are residences in the downtown, they're going to be frequenting those businesses. So if you suddenly say there's no more businesses, it's just residential, there's no place for these people to go but Beverly to do their shopping. So it's, you know, in the long run, it's, it's more complicated than that. I will say though.
But you have to, so what you have to do is personally have to allow mixed use. Allow residential upstairs. We ungriffed it in. So most of my business is on mixed use with apartments upstairs. I have no problem building apartments and a long list of people that want to get in there. And, and, but it's, it's the businesses downstairs that are just challenging to maintain those businesses.
So, so the Cape Cod model downtown bylaw recommends active commercial uses on the first floor and residential on the first floor with a special permit. So there is a way out. And if you don't, owner just demonstrates that it's impossible to support a retail space, get a special permit and put in a resident.
Well, I, I think this obviously is generating a lot of discussion. And I think the goal is to have active retail restaurant uses. But it's how do we get that? Also allow people return.
Yeah. One of the things we've been brainstorming on is the idea of having a recruitment of businesses. In the short term, we've been brainstorming about businesses that would be, make it on a four season basis with local clientele that are not competitive with anything in town and don't rely on patrons, singles, single patrons between 20 and 40 years old. Because there's nobody like that.
Very few people.
Very, yeah, yeah. But that's what my point is. My point is we've identified types of businesses. And, and Jim and I have been talking about going, reaching out to, one, one favorite is an Asian takeout restaurant. We've identified several Asian takeout chains or small regional groups that are, that have nothing between Beverly, Foster and Ipswich. And we would reach out to them and see if they would have an interest. In the longer term, we might be able to do some market surveys or something like that and be more formal about it. But it seems to me that, that that kind of a proactive or curated business recruitment effort over time could be something that would be part of, go some distance towards, towards talking about, towards addressing the issue that Gar and Jim are raising here.
Tony, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, you know, how, how has the approach changed since COVID? I imagine there is, you know, a playbook of how to approach this pre-COVID. You have to factor different things in. You know, there's a lot of business, a lot of small businesses didn't survive the pandemic. And, you know, and what people want or what has the ability to survive now may be different than prior to the pandemic. So how?
Well, I think there's a couple, a couple things. So let me kind of just find that one. I think one of the things that has happened since COVID is that during COVID, we kind of gave outdoor dining carte blanche. And in some communities, that's been rolled back. But people still want that al fresco, outdoor dining, outdoor gathering. So kind of that's almost now expected. So that, that's kind of a switch. There are certainly much more delivery and takeout. For many restaurants, their takeout is more important than the cash flow than their in dining. So having from a planning, parking perspective, you need to manage the curb, as they say, so that there's pickup. So that is clearly something that has changed since COVID. And in terms of retail, some of that order and pickup. And many retailers at least got some level of digital store, you know, a digital facade, not just a bricks and mortar facade. So the notion of ordering and picking up is, is, you know, and wanting that immediacy is affecting retailers. I think the other part is people also, because so much is on Amazon, people also are starting to want that in-person experience and also, also to try things on. And some people are wanting to avoid delivery charges. So they want that in-store experience. So inventories are just, are smaller since COVID. But there's kind of now a shift that people are wanting that. They want to save the money and not have to do delivery charges. So that's one of the other trends in retail. On COVID, there was a big focus on home goods and making your, if you were spending 24 hours at home, you wanted to be a little nicer. This kind of shift that shifted from, away from home goods to kind of personal services. But people want indulgences and taking care of themselves, whether that's dining or spas or yoga or, but also I think that whole notion of experiential retail. People can order commodity type retail on Amazon. But they, you know, what the local retailer can, is either freshness or that personal relationship or an experience, whether it's the tasting, whether it's demonstrating how something works. That, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, some people have wine and cheese nights when you're, you know, getting your hair done. Or, you know, or something at the, you know, a brew at the barber shop. That, you know, something to kind of augment and create an experiential piece. You also, you know, I think the other thing since COVID is the rise of ghost kitchens, which is not an issue in Manchester. Ghost kitchens is where a restaurant is not serving. And basically it's just a kitchen for delivery services. Which is a new regulatory issue. Does that kind of help?
Yeah, no, that's really interesting.
I have two questions. One is when we think about our downtown, we, we have little retail, small, small footprint spaces. And then we have a couple of larger footprint spaces. Rosby's and the Harbor Point Collective space come to mind. And maybe, maybe there's some other that are the middle. So is, would it make sense to treat those spaces differently in terms of the require or allow question? As we think about something, that's the first question. Well, I'll let you answer that one first.
I think you're, you're going to have to have a really good rationale for treating it differently. It might be somewhat stale, but it's also looking at, I would look at street fund capacity. You really, you know, one of your benefits is having small businesses and small spaces because for startup businesses or small businesses, they're not having to lease out 3,000 square feet, which is kind of your standard size in commercial development, even though that's starting to shrink because people are using less space these days and using their space most of, more efficiently. You know, I don't have a clear answer because I think, I want to think about it. But I also think, you know, that issue about allow, you know, special permit, you know, mandate. I think it's something you're going up to thrash out locally too.
And then the second question is, are there, besides zoning and the other things we've talked about, one thing that you don't have on your lists, I don't think are through the policy Jim mentioned that, you know, that you can't affect state legislation, but the ease at which somebody can get a liquor license or other kinds of municipal incentives or lack of disincentive, you know, simplifying. What are the things that we should pay attention to?
I didn't address the liquor issue. You're right. And that's not to say you don't need it. I don't, I'm not clear how many licenses you have, you now have, and if you have any that you haven't awarded out. The legislature has allowed home rule petitions on providing additional licenses, particularly in the case of downtown revitalization. And there, I'm not up on the latest liquor license, liquor laws or licensing laws. There was some changes in the last two, two and a half years, I believe, that allowed municipal authorities a little more flexibility. I'm not sure. You're, you may be more on top of it than I am.
Not yet.
We have extra licenses.
But the hot, was not exactly known for a hot pet of liquor licenses. So.
We have extra licenses. They are not all issued.
So you may, yeah.
I mean, that's not a barrier. Yeah. But what other municipal kinds of things? Or zoning, I mean, one, an obvious one is the unzoning is.
The biggest thing, businesses want to get their permits, get in and get out. They want to know what permits they need from day one. So having a permitting guide can be very helpful. Also having, you know, so that people know who to talk to, what the permit is required. And there's multiple examples. I know Dedham did one, Salins got a good example of permitting guides. The other piece is part of welcoming a new business is this is what you need to do, A, B, and C will help you, you know, you know, what's the timeline? Because a lot of people, when they're first starting a business, you know, they're not anticipating that it might take 90 days or six months to get, get permits or even longer. So the more you can be, provide a pathway to certainty. That doesn't mean yes to everything. It means here's the process, what's the criteria? Making it very clear. Online applications often make it easier for people. But also sometimes having a, you know, just like on real estate development, having, you know, an orientation meeting for a new business. Here's who you have to talk to. You know, the Board of Health is here. There's, you know, talk to Mark on this thing, talk to, you know, Town Administrator on this. There's these boards that meet, you know, at this frequency. Oh, you're in a historic building, you better talk to historic. Kind of fun, getting that clear for people is really important.
I wonder if the chamber has a role in that, you know?
So I've never gone through the process, but then earlier I can tell you, Manchester is actually very good. We have people at businesses that have complained in Essex, for instance, that they don't have that smooth a process. And we try to, we actually hired a student, high school student for a year, for a half a year, to write policy in Essex, just kind of map out a plan. But Manchester seems to be pretty good. And I, I think if there were anything, it might be parking limitations that, you know, a lot of people, most of the businesses are grandfathered in right now in, in terms of parking. So that might be something if a person wanted to open a business and just being up a parking, could be a little more lenient than you might be if you had plenty of businesses in town, something like that. But I think the town might be, because it's so small, but it's a great, the town hall is great to work with. Select one and play with it. Just the fact that you guys are having this meeting tonight, this is a great town in terms of support for our businesses, I would say.
I guess.
I also want to say that, you know, in the business survey that was done during COVID of businesses in Manchester, they surveyed Manchester and Essex. People were much happier in Manchester, business people with town hall and the support that they received from offices and boards at town hall, reinforcing what Jim just said.
That's something to keep an eye on for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. You can always improve on that. But, and that's a real selling point for business recruitment. Because that, that deters a lot of people.
Okay. I want to get a little bit more granular on the land use. You mentioned active for active uses. We have, we've, we haven't resolved the require or allow. But perhaps there's the, you require the parking for the residential, but you don't require it for commercial. That might be one incentive at least.
Looking at shared use parking.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I understand that you're interested in going to follow town meeting. And I know parking is always an issue that draws a wide range of opinions. And God forbid someone takes away a parking space. But so I didn't know if that was going to be something. But clearly you need to look at the general district in downtown overall. Think, you know, zoning and land use are part of implementation of a plan. So developing that plan and looking more, you know, looking in a more detailed way at parking, you know, as was mentioned, you know, by folks on, virtually you've had two parking studies. It's time to dust them off and reread them and implement some of the recommendations. And shared use parking, I believe, was one of those.
So if we were to implement a land use or zoning, whether it's in November or beyond, do you have a recommendation on the geography of where you would recommend? Like physically where this district or overlay district would be?
I would, I would probably, we had a map at the, at the forum where I would include Moscone Park. I would include the Harbor Shop area. I would include the Town Hall area. I would include School Street up to the fire station and Elm Street, you know, on the backside, backside of school. I would go down Central and Washington. I would include Beach Street. I would include Summer Street. To the end where you include the train station.
Even if you were going to require?
And you require, well, if you're talking about require a special permit, I mean, your concentrated area is really Beach Street and Summer Street for most of your retail businesses. And the Harbor.
This is up by Town Hall. And you would keep it just along the streetscape?
I would, um, what are you, what are you asking along the streetscape?
You wouldn't, the district that, we would just be focusing right along the street, not, not.
I think in terms of requiring ground floor habit, retailers who face the street. If, if they're located at the rear, I'm not clear, a rear building or a rear entrance at the back of the building needs to be retail. I think that, you know, I think you could allow that to be residential. But I think it's important to have that transparency. Particularly, you know, this is your, you know, here.
Yeah, that's a touchscreen, so be careful. But you can point.
But it's really Beach Street from the tracks to Union Street. Summer Street, you know, Summer Street from Beach to Washington. You know, it's really east, yeah, east of the dry, east of the dry cleaners is more residential. That's how I can do this. Back off.
Of Beach Street.
And we're creating a new district essentially here.
Well, I, I referenced in the detail that I thought Winchester had, which has a very nice town center, has an interesting approach to their use table where they, in their downtown, they have three or four subzones. And they regulate use by each of the subs zones within the downtown. They regulate what's allowed on first floor. They regulate what's allowed on first floor and what's allowed on upper floors. So it's, it's very clear. It's not just an amorphous mixed-use commercial where we might assume that the first floor is commercial. And it's residential. It's, it's very clear on very specific uses. And that might be something to look at.
So a sub-district of the general district essentially.
Yeah.
So is this what you're recommending basically? Then Harbor Point, would we include that? That's going down to Mosconona, my, my, okay.
You should certainly.
But I think, I think to Jim's, you know, to the point that two of your property owners indicated, that, that includes much of your area. But you've got residential on the north side of Central that maybe, you know.
Not, not, not much here beyond the.
Oh, Union, maybe.
Beyond the, some, but, I mean, could it be written so that if it's existing, you know, that it's a conversion from residential, from commercial to residential?
So, and that's where I think people are most concerned, is the conversion. But I think.
I think it still, it still puts an encumbrance on the property, right? So that's why the Realtors, you know, unless it's real estate as well, that's why the real estate association of Realtors is against this as well. Because it just puts an encumbrance on, it's an encumbrance on the building and it's going to lower the value of those properties in town. And, and it's not, I mean, it's easy for people who don't own these properties and don't manage what goes into these spaces to say, oh yeah, let's mandate retail on the first level of these spaces. And, you know, it's easy for people to say that. It's not easy to do. It's, it's very challenging. And, and, you know, I have, yeah, I can give you examples. It's just not easy to do. And quite frankly, if I have to do it, I have empty spaces, I'm going to make up the, the lost revenue by raising my residential rents and, and raising rents in other places. That's how I'm going to make it up. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lose money. So you have to, you have to, you know, and, and we already have a housing, a housing shortage. I won't say affordable, we have a housing shortage already. You know, I think when you make, you know, yeah. So I, I still don't think, I think you want to work with the, the property owners to, to get these, to, to keep these spaces, retail and, and restaurants. But I'm not so sure that mandating that is, is the right thing to do. Kind of, you know, it's kind of like rent control. Everybody's like, oh, that's, that's a bad rent control. And all that does is prevent people from being able to go out and build new units. And so it actually hurts.
All right, Sandy, Sandy has a comment.
I have a question, actually. I mean, that's to the, this require or allow situation. And that is, I'm under the impression, and I'd love to understand if it's a correct impression, that businesses are drawn, part of the draw to a downtown area is that there is a certain level of density of businesses, of active business. And once you begin, that begins to erode, you're on a perilous path to things, to lots of vacancies. And that seems to me to be one reason to require, at least for a period of time.
Yeah, you're going to need to find a workable solution with your business and property owners and the issue of how you retain retail space. Because you're right. One of the advantages is right now you have a fairly limited area within Manchester where retail is allowed. So I would advocate for keeping it very compact and not, and not increasing it. Because we, so that's one thing. There may be, you may, you know, you may want on the front edge, you know, to have it in kind of a very poor area, one way. And then on the edges, you know, have it more discretionary. You know, a special permit could give you that discretion to go either way. And, you know, there are a lot of vacant, both mixed, vacant ground level on mixed-use buildings. You know, not in Manch, not, you have, you have vacancies. I don't think it's because they're new buildings that been built for mixed use and they were, because they have vacant ground floors because many, I think your vacancies, see, some of it is because I think people are rehabbing their buildings. Reasons expire, some people retired. Some people managed through COVID, but then XL reset. I'm, I'm moving on. So I think you've got a variety of reasons. I mean, one per, one table suggested doing exit interviews after businesses leave, which I actually think is a good suggestion. Because what you read in the newspaper, what people presume why they left is not always why they left. They're making, and I would also caution that sometimes it's easier for a person to say, oh, that town wasn't supportive. And the story may be totally different. So, but you may or may not, you know, but I think having that discussion, you can, it's always an opportunity to learn and get better.
Yeah, one point is, is you go to a lot of destination places, you know, around, I don't even want to call it tourist towns, but kind of little regional places. For example, I was in Rockport last night, or yesterday afternoon. And they have some empty spaces. And they, I've been going there my whole life. There's always some empty spaces. There's always some, somebody, you know, there's a finished store there for 20 years. There's a building being rented. There's, you know, somebody, they missed the season, but you can see that maybe they'll be open in August, September. You know, there's always that turnover. And so we have that here now. We may have a few extra spaces. But again, you know, I think as, as we work through many of these, these items here, we'll be able to do a better job of bringing people who are either already in the region or coming here for something else, get them to stay for a longer period of time, partially through making it easier for businesses to open, making it easier for people to find parking, whether it's through the map that Jim's working on. What's through, I have been sent Tiffany an outline of visitors page where we have a lot of information on our websites and on some other associated websites. But unless you look for it, you don't know where, where to look. So I've consolidated a list that I'm going to work with Tiffany to at least initially put together on the town website.
Highlighted on the homepage.
Yes, it'll be right on.
Or highlighted on, at each business, you know.
Yeah.
And it'll be maybe, you know, something to get going for this year, whether it stays there, whether it's linked to something else, whether it's something that it picks on beyond or Chamber. But, yeah, I already talked to Jim about linking his map to the webpage. So, so, so I wouldn't be too, too concerned about having some storefronts. Because now we're in a position, and I think by having these forums, you know, I think we've heard that people want, want more vibrancy and want us to work on what we're talking about.
Yeah, I thought the forums were interesting in that they really wanted us to produce retailers.
Yeah, there is a concept called economic gardening where people are really thinking about, you need to grow businesses, not just recruit businesses. And so that pop-ups are one way of doing that. And I, I mentioned in the detail sheet, you know, town of Ashland actually built a little pop-up area, 300 square feet. And any entity can lease it for a week. So they can try out things. And it also happens to be near where their farmer's market is, so there's activity. But that was a way to kind of help, you know, give people opportunities. You know, whether it's someone who's really kind of an Etsy vendor who does like one week, you know, or someone who's seriously interested or, you know, maybe it's a nonprofit, you know, maybe the Girl Scouts sell cookies for a week. But it's a way that, that's one example. And Lull, they have a consultant that curates some vacant space. And they've had some success where people, you know, you know, leased, you know, were a pop-up for two months that kind of built some business and then leased a nearby store. So, but they're always changing, they're always changing every several months. But that's been curated. But they're also, you know, having some owners give some vacant space so that, you know, or, or extremely reduced rent. You know, there's also several communities that have done pitch contests for new vendors. So City of Attleboro had a lot of vacancies. They, they partnered with some of their financial institution partners where they did a pitch contest. They had people from SBA and the financial community and others select the top three to five, you know, you know, business pitches, worked with people, provided technical assistance and some funding. Where, and also then worked with landlords to get some initial rent reduction. They now have, you know, at least three new businesses that came as a result of those pitch contests of things, you know. There was one business that wanted to do modest women's clothing because they have a large Muslim community. Who would have thought that would have been a business? But it's doing really well. It has lots of customers and has wonderful display windows, you know. And there was a bubble tea shop. So, you know, sometimes we don't know what people are thinking about, what that can, you know, bring different things. So there's, there's different ways, the tried and true recruitment of people who are experienced and want, you know, are able to open a neck, another outlet. That's a very good way. But I would also look at some more other ways. And it's a, you know, and it keeps things fresh. You know, I, and I appreciate what Jim's saying about how difficult it is to fill retail vacancies. But I think we've got, we got to look at creative ways of solving it. I'd also want to say.
One of the other things, if I could just jump in quickly. To Tony's point about how did COVID affect us? We really get killed with people learning to shop online. And although people are getting better at that, there's still a lot of people that are on, buying this stuff online. They're on, doing the Amazon thing. And one of the things that we really haven't talked about here is promoting people to shop local and, and getting people to come down. And I, it, it didn't escape me at that forum. I was at the forum, all these people saying, oh, you know, bring these businesses in and do this and do that. Some of those people I've never seen down there shopping, reading the blogs. And you've got to come down and shop, be shopped and patronize these businesses. That's how they're going to survive. And that's what's going to make, make other businesses come in and set up shop, you know.
So I'm going to, I'm going to talk about.
That's maybe something else we might be able to do is help promote shop local.
I want to talk about Rockport for a second. Because Rockport is about the same size as Manchester. It has motif number one, we've got the rotunda. It's got two little dinky beaches. We've got Singing Beach. We're a half hour closer to Boston. Rockport has got a thriving downtown. And the reason they do is because they've got 10 art galleries. We have one on the upstairs, which is a great art gallery, but it's, it's recent. There are a lot of artists.
There's another art gallery way in the back of one retail off of Main Street.
And then, you know, people put up art in their, in their real estate offices and things, but they're not really galleries. But there are a lot of artists living in this town. We don't even have an art association. We don't have a cultural district. We're just, we're just ragged.
Well, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day.
Yeah, but people can paint in.
I could have written a law much longer, mistress. But, and I happen to agree with the shop local a lot. But I think that's part of promotion and marketing. But I tried to identify some early action steps that are building blocks. And yes, a cultural district, you've got library, you've got the museum. Get your artists involved, do your art week again. It's a building process. You guys have been focused on policy and you got to implement.
So are there carrots that people, you know, mandates versus carrots? Are there carrots that people have in zoning laws to encourage mixed use?
The typical carrot is sometimes if you do this, we'll give you a little hype, we'll give you, let you go up another story and get more residential units. So that, you got to. There's trade-offs, you know? It's like, that, that is, that is a three-way. On new development and some rehab, adding additional intensity, whether that's because you've got, whether it's through height or increased, you know, lot coverage or enhanced FAR. So there's a couple of ways to do that. But that's one, you know, I can't, are you in the KPN Economic Target Area? There, the Commonwealth has an economic development incentive program. And I know there's a KPN Target Area, but I can't remember if Manchester's part of it or not. I know Gloucester is an Economic Target Area community. And it might be worth exploring joining that target area if you're not. But that does enable you to give some financial incentives on new investment in terms of a reduction in real estate taxes. So you can do what they call either a special tax assessment, which is a five-year phase up, phase in of real estate taxes. But it zeros out the first year. Or you can do what they call district improvement, tax increment financing, which is not, which in Massachusetts is different than any other state. But it's a tax incentive rather than, and so on incremental new taxes if you're doing a real estate project. If you're in an economic target area and the municipality approves, as well as the State Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, you can sometimes give a reduction in real estate taxes and have a tax agreement for a minimum of five years, a maximum of 20 years. But that does not change the existing assessment and only deals with the incremental new real estate taxes. So those are your kind of two major ways of doing it. Sometimes waive some permit fees. But permit fees often go to pay staff who are doing the regular, the administering. So, and I have not looked at your permit fees to see if they seem out of line. I haven't heard anything negative about it.
I think they're below, I think they're below market rate, which is probably why we get such a great reviews.
And the thing is, every time you give a tax incentive, that affects the general fund. So, I mean, sometimes it's worth doing, so, you know. But the easiest way is to kind of help get businesses in business and support and mark, you know, help with the promotion and marketing and drawing it. But also augmenting that cultural activity piece. Because that will draw people, that's an active use.
All right.
And churches are also spaces that can be used for public events. West Concord, most of the churches on the weekend weekends are used as cultural space in addition to worship.
All right, well, I think we have, you've given us a ton to think about. And I'm going to add, are there any more immediate questions? And I'm going to add, are there any more immediate questions for Cathy? We know where to find her. We may-
I just have one question, Cathy.
Where you've been so quiet.
The first time I've actually seen a presentation, I missed the last. So you do have investment, streetscape, walkability enhancement throughout downtown. I think that's something that downtown improvement is, that's addressed some years ago and will continue to address it as we get closer. Have you looked at the downtown and thought of any redevelopment of existing spaces that would help enhance the downtown?
You know, I think the building on School Street next to, you know, that's the vacant lot between the fire, across from the fire department. I mean, that's, that's a larger, that's one of your larger spaces.
Yeah.
You know, some people mention childcare, one or both could be there. You know, that also looks out, that whole area to me could be a really interesting-
There's other spots going in the downtown area that are deserving.
Yeah, and that's kind of not in your kind of core downtown area, but it's in your downtown. So that seems like it has a lot of layers.
There's other spots though that are definitely in the downtown lower, down low, I'll call it lower versus upper here, that could use a little sprucing up if not completely redevelopment.
Point for gas station.
Would that, would that help? That help benefit the downtown?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that has, that has room for some, you know, you could do some kind of paid effort on volunteers to kind of spruce that area up as well. Because it's an interesting area.
I had a more, I had a more larger approach.
Go back to the Hooper building, the craft-
The Hooper building, perfect.
If you had retail only to 30 feet and then you had, just like they're doing at Seven Central, a unit, a residential unit behind the retail with-
Yeah, and above.
I mean, it's a three-story building, right? With residential above mixed use, but keeping this, that seems to me a really good, as opposed to a large vacant commercial-
Right.
And it has a loading dock down below. It has, it has parking, whether you like how it looks or not is another, but it has parking, it has a streetscape and it's large. It has a view.
There's a, the rears are interesting, could be opened up, you know, in that area. You know, that could be a different, but that's another project. So you've got a lot of basic steps that I think you need to work on. I think, you know, getting some excuses allowed you, so I think you need to have a discussion. You know, people have mentioned breweries, you want a brewery, it's not allowed right now. Not protected.
We don't allow hotels or inns.
Yeah, a lot of people mentioned inns, you know? School Street might be a location for an inn.
That would be great.
Hotels are interesting too in their overlap with the short-term rental issue. So a lot of the times, you know, the lack of having hotel or inn-
Drives the short term.
It drives the short-term rental issue.
One of the things we might consider is allowing short-term rental in ADUs in the downtown, not in the neighborhoods.
It is all the name.
Yeah, that's the thing, it is.
Yeah, but there are people drinking and partying all over the downtown theoretically.
Until nine o'clock.
Well, some of these we got to talk through and they're not going to be resolved in one night, but I did want to try and get that, you know, short-term action plan and give you, and give you a list of things that you need to identify, who's going to work on it, who's going to, you know, who's the convening entity for some of this. And then I'd review it at least on a quarterly basis, even perhaps even a month, so it's like things don't fall down.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've given us a lot to think about. November is chasing right up, right along there very quickly.
It might be to keep it simpler for November and then have a larger discussion on some of the things that might be a little, need more airing.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, great. I think we will continue. Thank you, Steve, for coming. Tony, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. John, thank you for coming. And everybody online for, Jim in particular, but others, please feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting. We don't have too much additional business, but-
This portion is-
This portion is, I think, unless, I think we're probably kind of done enough tonight on this, you may.
I'll be here.
Yeah, that's be great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cathy.
We'll put that up.
Thank you, Cathy.
We, next item is just, is there a quick update on the driveway, what you've done on driveways?
So I met with the Public Works and the Fire Department and went over the driveway bylaw and the regulations. And so after reviewing it, what I've done is I've moved all the, I have a draft, I want to review it with them one more time, the regulation portion of it. Because what I've done is I've moved all the, you had regulations on width and how far from certain things in the bylaw as well as in the regulation. So the bylaw should stick with your goals and the purpose of everything. You've already authorized your planning board to craft the regulations. So all the technical aspects should be in the regulation. So I've done that and so I just need to re-review it with the police fire chief and not the police, the fire chief and the Public Works. And I will send out a draft for the next meeting.
Great. The next item is just a follow-up on Chris's thought piece that he did on senior housing. We just, we're not really going to delve into senior housing tonight, but do you want to just tell folks what your purpose was in both their little, because of open meeting law, we can't like debate them except in open meetings. So I know you've thought a lot about senior housing and-
Yeah, I have thought about senior housing and we've actually put two drafts of actual bylaws together, which are in the, at the end of the piece. What I want people to think about is the broad range of different kinds of senior housing. It's not just, for example, Brooksbillyish. They can be very small, they can be very large. Probably what we're looking for in Manchester is much smaller ones, at least because the lots are also small. So we're not going to see, you know, AD unit complexes being proposed. So I just wanted to give you all a sense of what these things are and whether we should, whether we should include all of them or some of them, whether we want to have minimum lot sizes or not, whether we want to encourage reuse of existing buildings. These are all things that we're going to have to go through. At the very end, you'll see the actual wording of bylaws that we've discussed and actually approved, but never got taken up by town meeting.
Why was that? After putting all that work into it, you ran out of time in that one town meeting.
That was why. That was why.
So you just didn't have the opportunity to bring it?
There were a bunch of things that we wanted to bring, which never happened.
Yeah. But we are going to pursue them now, correct?
Well, that's what we said. We said they were among our priorities, whether we get to them in November is to be, you know, but certainly I think, we said we were going to try to make that downtown and senior housing as our priorities for this year.
Yeah.
So I think Chris did a great job of telling, saying where we are. So everybody should read it carefully and we'll have a discussion very soon about-
And either we mark up the, potentially the language of the existing bylaws that we've drafted, or you say, let's start all over.
I'm going to act stupid here. Do I know where those are?
It's on the share, on the meeting folder.
Oh, it's on the meeting.
Can you access that now?
I don't know.
All right, I'm going to send you a link and if you can't access it, yeah.
It's in the document you sent though, right?
Yeah, I sent it to you.
But I'll, I'll make sure, if you don't have access to the meeting folder yet, we need to make sure you get there. Okay, do you have access to the meeting?
I do, I have all kinds of access. I'll limit it.
This is whistling.
So I've read it all.
Bookmark the link that I'm going to send you before I'll, I'll send it before I leave here. Bookmark it, that's-
Where do you see it?
Okay. The, we said we would do liaison updates, so in, I know you're the Concom person and-
Mark, I'm going to let Mark do it.
So I said to Mark, you can just give us a quick update on what the Concom does and what the Open Space Committee does. So, and what's, what's their?
So they, at their last meeting, they reviewed Reed Park and they closed the hearing on Reed Park. They also approved the culvert replacement project, a notice of intent for that, as well as for the retaining wall replacement for further upstream, going back all the way past the fire station. They also received a similar presentation from Public Works and I believe it's Westman Sampson about Sweeney Park. Because as you saw from their presentation, some of the existing field is, a portion is, is in form of wetlands. So the commission agreed and that's what they were seeking was some guidance, whether they would be in favor of allowing the renovation of that field. And so it seems like they gave a positive response, and it's not approval or anything, but they gave a positive response, they'd be able to do so. So they're going to, I believe, continue the Parks Department with developing the plans, very similar to what you've seen. And then they talked a little bit about access to Western Woods. That is something that is also being discussed by the next group I'm going to talk about. But there was some funding set aside for the Conservation Commission for a Western Woods project.
Does anybody know where the Western Woods are?
Yeah.
You know, west of Pine, west, yeah.
Yeah, west of Pine.
West of Pine.
Yes.
Beverly side of Pine and, and this side of 128.
That's, yes. And so, so that whole area is-
You need to explain what the issue is.
Okay, so there's several issues there. One is ownership. More than 50% of the properties are publicly owned or owned by the Manchester Conservation Trust. So it's either town-owned or trust land. I believe that's pretty much it. They are continuing to, not all of the townland is under the control of Conservation Commission. Much of those properties are under the control of the Select Board. That is something that, you know, at some point will probably be discussed about whether they should be, more of them should be preserved. One of the bigger issues is also the assessors office trying to map where these are because they're not correct, their tax maps. I talked to a lady just last week who came in, who has a parcel and it's not shown on the assessment. And they know she has a parcel and they're filling her, but they don't know exactly where it is. It's not very much, so don't feel too bad.
Does she have retail on the first floor?
How big is the whole area? Acres?
What is 500 acres?
500?
It's a big, it's a big area.
It's up behind Brookwood, you know, around those trails up in there.
Got lost back there.
Yeah, it's easy to get lost back there.
Yeah.
So it goes all the way to Beverly border.
Yeah, so I know the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, who was just at one of the meetings, is also beginning to actively pursue additional acquisitions, engage with various people. Those won't be announced until it's, anything's actually transferred. But as part of that, so the assessors office has some CTC money to try and straighten out some of these ownership issues. They've been working on that, you know, a little bit at a time over the last few years. The Conservation Commission has some money for some sort of management. Their, it was kind of a vaguely written application several years ago. And so they feel that they, their big issue is public access. One main public access point from Beverly side and there's one from the Manchester side, which is at the end of Crooked Lane, there's parking for cars. It's not owned, I believe it's owned by Manchester Essex Trust. And then it crosses different town and trust ownerships as the trail goes into the woods. So they've been out looking at a couple of other locations. There's one closer to the highway, actually directly opposite, you know, the off-ramp from the southbound side. It is kind of steep, but it is, does access, it is townland at the bottom, so you could improve it with some parking spaces, improve a trail. It is steep, but once you get in there, apparently it connects to the whole trail network in that area. So that's one, one location that they're looking at. So that's, that's kind of the Conservation-
So their goal is just to make it more accessible, is that what?
Yeah, their goal is to make it more accessible, easier for people to use the trails. I believe Manchester Essex Trust is looking at trying to better mark the existing trails. They do have a nice map on their website. Again, that's something that should be linked to our account thing. So I'm working on that as well. So, so that, that kind of goes into the Open Space Committee as well, where they've talked about access and trail accesses. One of the other things the Open Space Committee is, has been working on is better parking for Powder House Reservation. Traditionally, people would park behind the Housing Authority building, there's a long row of parking. And for whatever reason, the Housing Authority started objecting to that. So some CTC funds were appropriated, we've had the property surveyed. It was discovered that one of some of the buildings encroached in the town right away. So we're in the process of working something out. We've designed reparking spaces that we would-
They're marked, right?
That we would build in exchange, give, for enhancement for three others that are closest to the entrance to use for trail access. We would build these additional three spaces for them so there's no loss of spaces. So that's what we're working on and waiting to apparently a new director for the Housing Authority, supposed to have started July 1st. I don't know if that person did or not. I've left a couple of messages, so we'll hear that.
Mark, there's three entrances to Powder House Reservation on Pine Street. Is on-street parking permitted along Pine in those areas?
I don't believe there's on-street parking, I think it's, yeah.
It's split closer to gas station, but you have to walk.
Yeah.
That also-
And also access.
And, well, Film Street too.
Right.
Everywhere, people get in there. Is the, the open space and recreation, that's an appointed position or is that, it's not elected, right?
We're the only elect, us in the elect ward.
Right, okay.
Only one's got the privilege of.
Campaigning.
And then speaking of Powder House, the Bike and Ped Committee has been working with a trail, instructing to put together a plan to create a, we'll be able to make it a fully accessible trail, but it'll be in what's called All Access Trail in Powder House. So from the, behind the- So from the, behind the Housing Authority, uh, you would go into where there's some benches and they would go up the, the grade toward the water tower. Come back, you know, and go up. And then there's a steeper section and they would go around.
Yeah.
Where there was an old road, um, and that would get cleared, regraded. And then it would come all the way down to where there's the furthest or the closest downtown Pine Street access, which is steep when it goes by somebody's house and actually leave encroaches a little bit on this property. So we would re-cut a new trail going toward the bench.
Yeah.
Get away from downtown, cut a new trail across. And so that would be, all the grading would make, would be maximum, I think of, it has to be 5% or more than, um, to be considered an all-trail. So, uh, they might put in like handrail for some of the steeper where it exceeds like 3% or something. So that's something that they've been working on as well, which is related to other two.
Okay, great.
There you go.
What we do is we have a liaison to different groups, so we're just getting off this. I was gonna ask next time if you can do the, if the facilities has met, but if not, some of the Essex.
So it is supposed to be in each week.
Okay, facilities, and if you have a chance to do historic, just, if you have time, just check with. Okay, so, uh, next time. Since Tony's come back, I thought maybe we should just spend maybe just five or 10 minutes talking about next steps on the downtown zoning. We, um, I think Mark and I talked before the meeting, whether or not we might want to have Kathy help us to craft a zoning article, given that time is short and Mark has a lot on his plate. What do people, we have some money that we could apply to that.
Yeah, so we have, we have money that we can apply to using Kathy or another consultant to put something together. But I'm thinking may not be quite as complicated as we need to hire a consultant to do that. There may be some additional side, other things we may want to, to have done. But, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, what we would do is create a limited downtown district, not nobly district, actual district. Because if you change, um, so that way you can change the rules specifically for this district. Doesn't affect any of the other general district. Remember, the downtown's only 20% of the greater general district, so, um, you start changing rules, it might affect certain things outside of the downtown. So if you, we pretty much know what limits of downtown are, right? And if, if people wanna come to the planning board and in the future and go, I was left out and I'd like to be, you know, the, the next house up on Summer Street, let's say we stop.
If you put retail on the first floor, sure.
Remember, most of the abutting properties all around are in the, no, they're in the, well, they're residential, but they're also in the general district.
Yeah.
So if we, if we go from, let's say, Boober to, uh, Union Street to down the beach, you know, like we were talking about.
Yes.
Um, if, if somebody else is in the general district and we're successful in creating a more vibrant and they would like to, to ask to be in, in included in the future, you know, making changes. I mean, a zoning document's supposed to be fluid, right? So, um, so it's, it's not a bad thing. So, and, and my thought was, is that the way this new district would work, it would just, well, it wouldn't create a whole new set of rules and regulations for this district to work within the existing framework. So we have a use chart, just be another column in the use chart. We have dimensional tables, it'd be another column in the dimensional table. We would try not, we have a parking standards. Now maybe we, we have to create some exemptions, like you said, for commercial in this district. So we can apply it just to this district and not to the rest of the general district. Uh, other, yeah.
Are you thinking about the idea she was talking about, that Winchester uses a, a sub-district as a general district?
No, this would be its own.
District with its own whole new set of rules.
Set of rules. I don't see an advantage to creating overlays of sub-districts or anything else. I, I think your downtown is unique enough, it ought to be its own standalone district.
The only question would be this sort of procedurally, just is the assessor, does that, you know, is there, is there a administrative reason to make it an overlay? Just, you know, from a, you might check with her, I don't know.
Yeah, I have, I just have a question. If we put, we're gonna have a consultant help us, I don't know if we answered it or not.
Yeah, we didn't answer that.
So would that, would that mean that we're gonna set what the design criteria is within that overlay district, correct?
So that would be a topic for discussion.
Design criteria, I mean, I mean, not in terms of aesthetic design, but.
You're talking about site plan review.
Talk about site plan review, about, about what is actually allowed within that area and where it is.
There's uses, what, what uses are allowed.
And dimensions.
There's dimensions, how high, how much setback.
Right.
Um, there's parking. We could have, um, design review, you have to have window boxes or, you know, or, but I, I worry that we, if you burden it, my opinion would be if you burden it too much.
Hearing you guys talk about regulations, let me tell you something, you're gonna kill the downtown area.
Yeah.
And you, I mean, it sounds like, I, it was funny listening to the beginning of this meeting, and now it sounds like you guys are on board and pushing forward with this, uh, mandated business down, down shift.
No, 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 we have not, no, Jim, no.
So, let me just finish my thought. As far as uses go, what do you have thoughts right now on, on, what do you think is appropriate for first level uses?
I don't think we've made a decision.
What's, what's on your mind right now?
I don't think we.
I don't think we've had, made a decision, I think.
Yeah, we, I think, Jim, what we would, what we, how, how, what we would do is, I would put, uh, you know, proposal together based on our existing zoning and our existing use chart for the new district.
Would you propose all just retail only?
No, no, we would go through, Jim, we would go through our existing use chart. And we would say, in this new district, you know, uh, let's say we have something for retail, we would say, yes, it's permitted, or P is permitted. You know, uh, something like we talked, someone mentioned, um, uh, childcare.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a special permit, right? You know, and.
So if you don't have retail checkmark, financial business checkmark?
I don't know if it's separately defined.
So let's not try to get into the weeds on this now. All we wanna try to do is say, do we wanna move forward to have continued discussion? I think there's consensus that we wanna move forward to have continued consensus. And I think that the, that we're responding to, we are worried about wholesale conversions to just residential. That's the concern. And right now, um, the cargo applicants said that they could, that mixed use is not allowed. I think that is actually even debatable when you read the zoning, but nonetheless. Um, so I think that the issue is not to, to try to make a decision tonight on any aspect of this, but to ask, do we want to move forward, whether it's Mark or Mark and Kathy to, to, to start to hammer out what these things would look like. And certainly, we will have public hearings and we will have in more meetings with input. And we certainly have heard the concern about, um, the tension between mandate versus allow. So I think that's fair.
I, I would suggest maybe it's, maybe it's limit retail, residential. Maybe instead of mandating retail or business, I mean, what you don't wanna see is all real estate offices. You don't wanna see all financial offices down there. I could fill that whole downtown area up with, 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 uh, real estate offices, chair will call another time, but I, I don't do that. But maybe what you do is you say, okay, residential by special permit or variance, right? And now, now you, there you go, you, you nip that right away.
Interesting.
Instead of, instead of restricting it across the board. Uh, and then you have the opportunity, if it makes sense to do residential.
Well, I think you could say residential's allowed on upper floors by right, but you need a special permit on the first floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, or something like that, you know.
Yeah, okay, so those are good, good thoughts.
I'm just gonna be open-minded because.
It's trying to remedy.
You guys, you never know, whatever is the regulations you put in zoning or, or law, you really can never think through everything that's gonna be impacted by those.
All right, so.
You want to be very, very careful.
Help, help me understand as the, as the new person here. What we're trying to do, if I understand correctly, is to remedy a deficiency in the existing zoning. I mean, that's.
And present it to town meeting to see if the voters.
Because mixed use is not exactly allowed as a first.
Yeah, um, Tony.
Well, just, given that Friday is August 1st, um, could the planning board talk at the next meeting? Really, like, really like look at the calendar and, you know, for me, I really wanna have a good understanding of a schedule, if we're gonna have town meeting in the fall, when that plan would be. And, you know, realistically, like, if you think it's something that can be accomplished. I think, you know, July went by like this, June went by like that.
And understood, yeah, for sure, whether it's, I mean, I think we can get something for November town meeting. But we have to spend a bunch of time talking about it. Whether or not we should is, we need to decide.
Right.
So, and the other thing is if there are other issues that need a, that are coming, but we'll, yeah, assume.
So I wanna understand where we are procedurally.
Yeah.
Because, and I may be completely misreading you, but what I'm hearing is that, that you have already decided things that maybe I haven't decided yet.
Yes.
Um, subsequent issues that, that, that will be in the zoning.
That's my job is to recommend things to you and then you decide.
But as long as we still have an opportunity.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So what, the other thing is I would like to have Kathy bounce ideas, to be able to use Kathy to, um, if I need her to write certain things, to review what I draft, bounce ideas off. So I would like to continue, since she's been involved, to continue to use.
It seems maybe before we write anything, we need to write down the actual issues of what exactly is this district? What exactly the, would be allowed? You know, go through our existing use table and then add other uses and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, special permit. Go straight through them and, um, dimensional requirements and parking seem like the big ones. And, and just march ourselves through those and maybe we could have Kathy online to.
I think the boundaries of the district are gonna be.
It's not, yeah, not true.
I will, so I prepared a map for, I will resend it, maybe I'll tweak it a little bit. And I can send that and we can have that as a basis for discussion.
It needs to be a parcel map.
Yeah, it was a parcel map that I had drawn a boundary around. But what we can do is, we can use that kind of as a basis for discussion. It's basically what we already talked about. And, you know, and then we can kinda, you know, there's two properties this way, one back behind there, not that one.
But I think.
Do that. And then the other thing I will do is for the charts, I will add, create, uh, I won't include all the other districts, but I'll put, um, all the uses on one and, and put my, what I recommend and then another blank column and you guys can fill in what you want and we can talk about this as well.
Seems like a good start.
And that way, I think that's an easier way than trying to reinvent a whole district, a whole new set of rules, is use our existing.
Yes, our existing template.
Is this a workshop type forum you're talking?
I don't think it is, yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be a meeting, I mean.
Yes, it would be an open.
From a starting point that Mark and Kathy would develop.
Yeah, and then we see how close we are to, uh, consensus.
Yeah.
And where we have disagreement and where we need public input, maybe we have a forum right early in September to get input on that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But once we have a framework, then we decide. That seems like a good way to go. Okay, great. Let's have an update on CST.
So, could you make a motion to, allow me to continue to use Kathy, uh, to assist in preparing that if necessary for the.
Yeah, we don't have a budget from her, is she an hourly, how's she budgeting?
We do have, we do have an hourly budget rate and her contract was.
So is there a, um, an offset value that number $2,000, $5,000?
Uh, so her, her current contract is, um, is about $2,000 to $3,000 left. So what I did is I encumbered the last, what was left of last year's funding for consultant services. And so she did an amended contract not to exceed that amount.
So can I just maybe ask?
I don't know, have a bill yet for what tonight's fee.
Maybe what we can do is make a motion to extend, um, Kathy's, uh, contract up to $2,000, pending a review of her current status on the budget, on our, against our budget and her bills with either Sue or me. I'm gonna be away, so one of us meet with Mark and just sort of say, okay, we have the money, we're not, you know.
Sure.
Um, if that's okay, and then would be, we're gonna go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
And. Pending that review. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Her services are effectively complete now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is hard to find a little work, so. Okay, we should just, uh, look at her contract, her scope of work, make sure she's delivered what she needs to and that. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a, since she'll be away?
Yeah, we'll talk about.
Okay, 'cause I don't think I have, maybe I do.
I think we had it in the beginning.
Okay.
But let's, mark us.
Okay.
And then there was an addendum that we, we entered into at the end of the year to just encumber that end of year money.
Okay.
Okay, um, CST, you guys went out there.
Excellent meeting, yeah, Mark and I went out there for a walkthrough, actually to check and see if they're complying with the special permit requirements, which Mark can give you an update, he went through the, all the points at the end. But they gave us a tour of the entire site to give us the status of what it looks like. And, uh, as, as I anticipated, since they were so good in the beginning about covering all the bases and making sure they did everything correctly, they are doing pretty good. So it's really, really quite good. Right now is that, that rock face has been blasted back, back where they get some, uh, put rock anchors and sturdy it up. This is where the building cascades down onto the lower level. They're gonna have exposed rock between the, the, between the parking garage to phase one and the phase two. They're just doing everything right. It, it, this year is all site civil engineering, burying the drainage, getting it all that, the wells are already in for the geothermal, the building drainage ditches and the collection basins and that stuff. It's really quite, quite impressive to see a contractor do it so well. And the contractor, Columbia, has, uh, their project manager's got everything under control. They're doing everything by what the owner wants, but also by good engineering and good construction practice. So I was, I was very impressed.
And you said that they wanted to make one change to the plan and, and do a dry.
Right, so they, they had planned on doing a wet basin with like a plastic liner underneath, so it retain water. They've chosen to change it to a dry basin, which I would, uh, and only fill up during major rain events. That's been reviewed by our engineer, so.
Give them the reason why they're making that.
The reason why is the owner would rather not look at.
The owner doesn't wanna see a wet, dry, wet, dry, wet, dry, it's not, it's just dry.
So that you've had Weston Sampson review that. So that you've had Weston Sampson review that and Mark and I talked about it, it seemed like it was administrative change, we did not need to reopen a hearing for that.
Doesn't involve, doesn't involve us at all.
So, and how about their website and the weekly or bi-weekly or monthly look ahead, whatever those.
I didn't look, they said they do have the website up, I haven't looked at it.
There's a couple of things that they were delinquent on, that Mark made him aware they were delinquent on and they said they would follow through and give us an update as to where his status is.
All right, I think we really wanna make sure that they're, 'cause that's the public facing piece and, um, that also the, that DPW should know and town administrator and Mark should know what that, whatever we ask for, two week or month look ahead.
Yeah.
What they're gonna be doing.
So they, they are in communication with Public Works because they're about, uh, dealing with utilities at Water App Design, Traffic Com, all those types of things. So they are, um, they're in constant communication with them.
But the website? Do you know what it's called?
If you can get that out there.
Yeah, all of us, that'd be great.
I'll send that out too.
And I had to go a link on our web, on our website, on the CST projects. Okay, great.
Yeah, that, that just makes me think that they were, um, out of compliance on a couple of things and we're talking about, um, process. And they're so buttoned up and they, you know, it seems like they really were genuine when they were saying what they were gonna do, but you think about some of these other projects that we've approved, monitoring that, the, making sure that they're doing what they were asking.
I think, I think the intent is, is we will follow up on those major projects, we just, this is a little check-in. I felt that they were, these guys were great, they, they gave us a tour, told us everything about everything, everywhere, what's happening now, future, and so I'm.
I know, but still.
They certainly will comply, if you, if you, I don't think you are, Peter, but I, I, the, I, they're not, they will do what they said.
Oh, I, no doubt.
Yeah, are you saying we should do more of that for other projects?
Yeah, which we've talked about.
It's a simple, it's a simple hours visit and just a little walk around, you can see it. Yeah, it's really well worth it.
Well, Cornerstone Church is on my list because they are more than two years.
That was before I even.
Yeah.
What was the deal?
It was even an idea in my head.
Yeah. So, anyway, we don't have to get into, but that's on my, my checklist, so. All right, do, Tony, you have anything, questions for us or, uh, feedback or?
No, I thought Kathy was really informative.
Yeah, she's gonna know what.
You know, I think that, uh, obviously a lot of stuff that she talked about goes beyond just zoning.
Oh, yeah.
Planning board, so that's where.
You got her handout, right? Did you get one?
I did, but she said she was gonna email it to me.
You got one?
Uh, I grabbed it, I got it another way, yeah. Yeah, so it goes beyond just like the planning board, a lot of the stuff she talked about and that sort of the downtown improvement, uh.
Yeah, lots to think about.
The committee, you know, really helps out with that. It's a lot of stuff that I didn't get to, we didn't get to do a lot in the hot, so it's exciting and interesting for me.
Yeah.
But I thought she was great. Chatted with her out in the hallway for a minute.
Yeah, she's great.
Very knowledgeable.
She never said much.
Yeah, she's good.
Very knowledgeable.
I was eager, I asked that question because, about post-COVID adjustment, but I was eager to hear what she had to say. It was pretty, pretty interesting, her response of how, how things have changed.
Great, well, thank you for coming, and you're always welcome at our meetings. Greg often, he, he attended many of our meetings, but he felt, but pleased for you to do it online for a long day.
I was here anyways.
Yeah, I know, we're meeting, but.
Been following you around.
But we also, we also let you know if we have something that's, but you're always welcome. Okay, minutes, we have, uh, May 12th.
I, I had a couple of changes on that.
That one had a lot, I think that was the AI-generated one.
Oh, really?
I think that's why it was, um, hard, it was, I thought it needed an edit.
Yeah, and some stuff shouldn't be in there.
Right, 'cause it was the AI, I think you need to take a look at that one.
So I'll, I'll look at, what's the.
Is this this one?
May 12th.
I don't think it's, I don't get a chance to look at this.
Yeah, it was an AI.
Okay, I'll, I'll read.
And it's like missing some sentences, I'm missing things and, and also it's a little argument.
Okay. Right, I think it could be some wrongs. Yeah, I have the same reaction to that one.
I know what AI, that one argument.
Um, how about May 27th?
I wasn't there that day.
Okay, May 27th, does anybody?
I, I'm amazing.
They're fine, and so you, were you there for that one? When was the election?
It was right after the election.
It was right after the election, it was your first meeting.
It was their first meeting.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to move, to approve the May 27th meeting, Chris, I think I just heard you move that.
Yeah, I'm on it, yeah.
And Peter has seconded, any other discussion? All in favor? Hi, minutes are actually very, okay, um, 6:23, that one, um, that was the meeting and that was our retreat.
Short, sweet minutes, yeah.
I'll take a motion to move, second, um, all in favor? Okay, um, and then, uh, 7:14, the only amendments I had there is that I was gonna do the electric, uh, the liaison to the old regional electric capacity question and I was gonna do the climate resilience, which didn't make it onto the list. So that was amendments to the 7:14, but other than that, I thought it was, um, yeah, fine. Okay, so moved, Sue, Peter moved and Sue seconded, um, all in favor? Okay, um, public comment, um, we had a notice from Essex and we had, uh, this morning we received an email from Tim and Katerina Gates, which I forwarded to you, it went to many people. I think it's a building, uh, um, a building inspector question. So, yeah, but it did come in. Any other, I don't thi, I didn't see any other, um, emails, um, amen, so. Any other public comment that we haven't gotten to tonight? The next meeting is currently scheduled for August 11th, um, and, um, it's gonna be virtual. But I think we can.
Should not do it. Be absent.
Yeah. We'll, we'll talk about that. So I, that's our current, current, um, late plan next meeting, so do be a little, because of all the other things we've got going on, stay tuned.
What happened with the light summer schedule?
I know, well, hopefully we won't meet the last week, the last meeting in August.
Yeah, it's just as like as last summer.
Hopefully meet on the 11th, but not, not for less. That's the goal. Or we might have a working group.
We may have to figure out like, before September to have another one. I don't, I don't think I can yet, whatever our formal schedule is.
Okay, all right, well, we'll stay tuned on that, um, we'll try to sum that up. Any other?
Just a quick question about the alternate planning board members?
Yes, that's on my question, great.
Okay.
And what's your question? Are we gonna do them?
Yeah.
Yes, we've had one person already, um, express interest, we're waiting for the AG to approve this.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're waiting on.
Okay, I didn't realize that, okay.
Oh, and any update on MBTA zoning improvement?
Same thing.
I just checked today.
Yep.
So we could meet with, uh, Tony and ask that, that it go on the agenda for the.
We saw it already, yeah.
We're gonna try and bring our legislators, you know, on this, 'cause it's just like so.
Yeah, so.
And no one listens, huh?
Right, okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you.